Right, this is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. It is Wednesday, December 20th at 6:36 PM. Apologies, we are a little late from meeting. I want to do a roll call vote. Mr. Creighton?
Jack Creighton here.
Ellen Marr present, Jean Haley-Dippold present. Is there anyone on the Zoom link?
This is Plex popping up as we speak.
Okay, great. Mr. Plex?
Chris Plex, aye.
Mr. Creighton?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Marr, aye.
Jean Haley-Dippold, aye. Okay, we will recess and reconvene at approximately 7:30.
All right. This is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. We are back from executive session. We have me, Ms. Moore, Mr. Creighton present. We have Mr. Plex available online and maybe Mr. Grady, who is ill and would like to be in person but unable to do so.
Okay. So I'm going to make a statement for the board and then we will open it up for public comment. Public comment will be approximately, depending on how many people use their hand, one to two minutes each so everyone can get a turn if you'd like. I'd ask you to identify your name and address as we typically do. Okay. So with respect to the Cohasset Harbor mooring issue, today, two members of the Cohasset Select Board, Ms. Moore and myself, as well as our town manager, Mr. Senior, and our town lawyer, met with Situate, namely two members of the Situate Select Board, their lawyer and their town manager. At that meeting, we discussed the moorings, the aquaculture licenses and a harbor management plan. We discussed working together to reach a mutually acceptable agreement. The potential terms are still being discussed in our confidential settlement negotiations, which we will share when we can. We are hopeful of working with Situate. We did confirm with Situate and they've allowed us to publicly confirm the following. First, they confirmed that the mooring notice is a direct response to the oyster farm litigation. Second, as to the moorings, as they publicly, their harbor master publicly confirmed yesterday on the meeting they had, which I bet some of you have seen, that everyone who has a mooring according to their notice and what they intend to do, everyone who has a mooring will keep their mooring. As to the waiting list, they also confirmed that folks can sign up through a specific Cohasset waitlist that they have on their website. The list will remain in the same order as it currently is today with respect to Cohasset. Also with respect to the map that they have sent around, they're going to verify the map including as to the boundary line that appears to be inaccurate. So with respect to the Cohasset Select Board, we do intend to keep all options open, including future litigation as to the moorings. But we are hopeful of reaching a resolution with Situate. So that's where we are. We are in the middle of negotiations right now with Situate. We wanted to update you all, including after the meeting, because we wanted to see the results of the meeting. At this point, we're happy. I'm happy to take comments again. If anyone who wants to make a comment, please come to the microphone and you will have two minutes. And please say your name and your address in town.
Susan Bryant, 251 Forest Avenue. I just want a clarifying question. I've heard that there's a lawsuit against the Department of Marine Fisheries and I'd like an update on that as well if possible. Thank you.
Yes. The town of Cohasset filed a lawsuit back in late August against DMF as well as the town of Situate and the three permitted oyster farmers, i.e. those that have aquaculture licenses. That litigation is pending. The complaint was served in early November against the defendants and now they have time to respond, approximately 90 days by recall correctly. So there's a process that goes forward in litigation and we're in the middle of that process.
Is there anyone online, Justin?
Do you doubt of anybody with their hands raised? Might I do have Mr. Grady and Mr. Plex for pocket.
Is there any other comments or questions?
Hi. Jeff Donzey, Cohasset Residence, 9 Parker Avenue. It seems as though you're just going along with this information on the Situate Harbor Masters website. We should, I guess, from your perspective, should we be following through with that? And then also, they don't have all the information of all the moorings. I have a mooring in that area and it's not in their records or I didn't receive a letter. And I know there's others here that didn't receive a letter. So where does that put us? Do you have any perspective on that? Seems like we were kind of blindsided on this, yeah?
So as I said, the Cohasset Select Board is keeping all of its options open including future litigation. We did want Situate's position as to the moorings, including people who currently have moorings or people who on the waitlist because we know that that is a source of a lot of angst for people. And so we wanted to hear directly from them, from their lawyers, from their select board. In terms of specific advice, as I said to some of you, we we are reluctant to give people advice as to their individual rights. You may have rights that the town does not have. Um, and so we leave it up to you in terms of your pursuit of those. What we can say is, um, we do realize that this whole entire issue, including the mooring notice, is a huge pain point and we're trying to figure out the best way to work through it. It may be a settlement, it may be litigation. Um, and right now, we're trying to figure out, um, by working with Situate through negotiations, um, you know, what we can come to and we may not be able to reach a settlement. Um, I do think that we'll do it on a very rapid timeline to see what's possible and what isn't.
Uh, Jeff Chubb, 56 Black Rock Road. So if they have half the harbor, are they going to be paying for half the maintenance, half of everything and of the harbor? And was that talked about? How, how, how will that go about? And I'll bring this to you.
I should move the mic closer. Um, so, so certainly Cohasset is aware that we have taken on, I don't know, for 300, 400 years. Um, I know some of you in the audience know the exact date. All of the expense, work, dredging, maintenance, safety of our harbor and all the expense that comes with it. The Cohasset Harbor is not a money-making machine from the town of Cohasset. It's not. It costs, it costs us money. It costs significant money to do the job correctly and we're paying for it because we know how important it is to everyone. Um, so it has not escaped our notice. That said, in terms of the back and forth with Situate and potential settlement negotiations, um, that is not something that we're able to discuss right now. But again, we're certainly aware of how much it costs to properly manage the harbor. Um, and as many of you probably know, the excise fees that you collect from the moorings are not commensurate with the cost to actually manage the harbor properly.
Uh, David Marks, uh, one of the eight land classes. I got a question. You said that they were going to resurvey the line that you're showing on your chart right there. I was just, say, looking at a chart from 85 to 95 and this chart here. This line is all over the board. Are they, shouldn't we as Cohasset, uh, take care of, make sure we get the line where we want it and not the line where they want it? Instead of having their engineers, we should have our engineers also on top of this? I just think we ought to have one shot, work together, but have our guys there also to make sure that line is correct. Because right now, they're so far off, it's crazy. No one has the right idea yet on that line.
So as it relates to the line, um, I think we can all look at it and say it's just wrong, um, based on what we're looking at with respect to the map. Um, and I think that view was shared by those, um, also looking at it in the meeting with us. So to your point, though, are we simply just going to accept what they say or don't say? Um, at the end of the day, again, like I said, we're keeping all options open, uh, that Cohasset has to, including litigation on this point, including what Situate is saying is in fact the line or not the line. Um, you know, this is something that we did a lot of research on earlier on with respect to the navigation byline in terms of the different maps and the different maps that are dispositive under Massachusetts law or not. So at the end of the day, um, we are going to continue to pursue Cohasset's interests, including where the line is as necessary. I don't know if that's of any comfort and what exactly we're doing on that front will in part depend on how these settlement negotiations pan out.
David Marks again. So you're saying we're not going to bother having an engineer from Coh, for Cohasset run that line? We're just going to rely on Situate to tell us where it is and that's okay?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that we are going to consider all options, including having and spending a lot of money. It takes a lot of money to survey. Um, we're going to consider all options as we need to. And right now, um, again, I'm reluctant to say more. The board hasn't made any decisions on that point. Um, but that would certainly be something that we would need to look into further if Situate maintains that position that does in fact the line.
We do have someone who asked a question. Uh, Mike, Mike, if you would just type in your, your full name and address for the record, just so I can read it, that would be great. Uh, so Mike asks, would the Cohasset Harbor Master have jurisdiction over the moorings and the waters on the Situate side?
Well, it's, without getting into legal arguments, which do you all really want me to do in public right now? Is that what you're asking the Cohasset Select Board to do as we consider all of our options? Uh, I'm not sure. May, maybe some of you do, but I'm not sure you do if you want us to represent Cohasset in future litigation. Um, all, all I would say on that point is, of course, we think we have jurisdiction. We're doing it right now as we speak and we have been doing it for centuries, including as we've dredged it. We, we have been controlling and patrolling and had authority over Cohasset Harbor and Cohasset Co. for over 70 years, including all the expense that comes with it, including, um, making decisions, you know, that you would normally, um, make as a town that has authority, including over the moorings. That is in fact what we have been doing.
Uh, George McGolden, 107 Gordo Street, Cohasset. Uh, don't have a mooring, not on our list. Worked with Situate last year successfully to acquire some land. You brought up the oyster farm. That was the, what started this? I've also given money to the friends of Bassington Beach because I disagree with the oyster farm. At the end of the day, it's not our land. It's not different than my neighbor building a second story that I can't see the ocean anymore. I don't own it, I can't control it. I think the town's been, has lost a lawsuit saying that we don't own that part of the harbor. So I talked to Situate today. They're honoring people that have existing moorings. So that should satisfy all you lucky people in the room that have moorings. They're honoring the waitlist. Should satisfy all you people that are on the existing waitlist. They are going to take the existing Cohasset waitlist as of February 16th for my grand new, brand new grandson. I can put his name on that list and now it's, it's the same list, but they are honoring everyone that's on the list. You still talk about all the money that we spent in the harbor for hundreds of years? Prescriptive easement, you're the lawyer, maybe do that. But if they're honoring the moorings and honoring the list, what is the harm to us? The way I look at it, we're getting somebody else that maybe will pay for future dredging. We're getting somebody else that may pay for the breakwater. The oyster farm, I agree, is the wrong thing. What's shocking is that the amount of money that Situate is going to gain from the licenses is under $6,000 a year. So it's not a monetary thing for them. It's because we, as a town, stepped in and said, you can't use your own property. They're so mad about that. They don't, they have spent and we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this issue. I think it's time we just stop wasting legal fees. They own half of it, we own half of it. Figure out a solution. Stop spending money on waters and figure out a solution. There's no harm. I don't see how they could change their mind in the future and say Cohasset residents don't have moorings, but they haven't done that yet. What is the harm about what's happening? I see us getting a partner that might pay for 50% of what, all the money that we're going to need going forward. So can someone tell me? I'm trying to ask what the legal fees are. I don't, I don't know. Can someone tell me what the harm is with this? If they're respecting the existing moorings and the waitlist?
Well, I am a lawyer, but not the lawyer for Cohasset. So I'm not going to provide a legal opinion or any legal argument on this. But what I will say factually, not legally, is, um, the town of Cohasset does in fact collect excise fees from the moorings, including the transient moorings, which are important to actually run our harbor. It is, um, important to hire and pay for our harbor master and other personnel. That is certainly an expense that we take on to safeguard our harbor and to comply with everything we need to do and all the reasons that you need a harbor master. And that's what those fees go towards. And so now Situate is asking for that money. Um, and so is it just a factual matter? They are asking you to pay for the money that would otherwise typically and normally be going to Cohasset in order to operate the harbor for which there's only one way in and that is through Cohasset, where we have to dredge and pay and patrol. Um, so, so factually, yeah, we, we spend money, um, including to patrol the channel, which is the only way by water to access those moorings that are otherwise in Situate.
So, uh, Mr. Plex has his hand up.
Mr. Plex.
Uh, sorry, just very briefly, I also want to remind everyone that we don't have a deal yet. So, um, we certainly appreciate the perspectives that have been shared by the folks in Situate in particular. Uh, but until we have something in writing, we're not comfortable about what it means for the moorings or for the oyster farms or about anything else, including the, the border that was on that map. So, uh, I just want to remind everybody, there's no deal yet. There's nothing written on the table yet. That's all got to be worked out.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Plex. We are just taking in feedback so we can hear, you know, how everyone is thinking as we try to see if there is a resolution with Situate.
Hi, just Jeff Donzey, Cohasset. Just wanted to, um, follow up on George's comments. I think to, or Cohasset to lose control essentially of half of its harbor, I think it's harm. Um, for, one of the potential scenarios, as I understood, could potentially happen is that the Cohasset Harbor Master may not be able to deal or serve those boats that are in their waters. And that could mean a boat sinking, boat's on fire. They can't deal with it. Um, from the Cohasset Harbor Master's side, they have to call Situate. And how, how will that work out? So I think, um, ceding control of half of our harbor that we've had for centuries is, just doesn't feel good to me or sound good to me. Um, also, question, um, as I pointed out earlier, Situate doesn't have all the records that the Harbor Master has on the moorings. Are you going to support them getting the records so that they at least do what they're doing now efficiently or, or not?
So in Massachusetts, we have the Public Records Request Law or the FOIA Act. To the extent that Situate requests something of Cohasset, as they have previously done, we will comply with the law. Um, I think it's premature to assume that Cohasset is simply going to hand everything over to Situate and have them go on their way with the moorings. Um, I don't want to convey that impression. So the answer is, to the extent that we are required by law to provide, um, the records, we will do so. Um, and like I said, we're going to keep all of our options open, including future litigation if need be on the moorings, but we are hopeful of reaching a resolution.
Jane? I have a comment.
Oh.
Oh, you go first. Citizens go first.
Hi, I'm Jeff Dean. Um, actually a Hingham resident, but I have a boat in Cohasset Harbor and a yacht club member. Um, grew up in Cohasset, um, in sailing and motorboating and rowing and everything else in Cohasset for all my life. Um, my question right now, though, is, um, I didn't get a letter that this issue was coming up. I found out about it through others. Um, the first date was January 1st to declare to Situate who I am and what I own for rights for mooring. Um, and now, and then on the website, it says February, I believe. Um, I think there's a lot of people potentially involved that don't even know this is happening. Do we, do I pay my fee to Cohasset and to Situate this year? Is there going to be an injunction or something that temporarily, you know, freezes this matter so that it can be sorted out? Or should I pay both fees? What should I do?
So I don't know to whom Situate has sent notices to. We only got the notice ourselves on Friday. Um, and that was through a helpful member of the public who forwarded it to us. Um, so with respect to all of the options, um, I think to the extent that your question is, to whom do you pay the fee? I think it's fair to say that Cohasset is going to work with our people. Um, we will talk with our lawyers and Mr. Senior about the fee issue, appreciating that there is this issue out there. Um, with respect to whether or not to pay Situate or not, I, I think, I think ultimately, I, we cannot advise you, and I know that this is frustrating, but we cannot advise. Some people may not want to pay the fee because they have certain reasons that they want to withhold the fee for legal reasons. Other people may want to pay the fee or both fees. Um, again, I'm hesitant to say yes, you should or you shouldn't. I think that's a decision that you have to make in terms of how you want to proceed with Situate. With respect to keeping all options open, you asked about a preliminary injunction and there, as I said, we're keeping the option of litigation open on the moorings if need be, but we are trying to take the path of, uh, seeing if there's a resolution first because, um, for a variety of reasons.
Uh, yeah. One of the things that's important, first of all, thank you all for coming here. Um, we're having this public meeting so you can tell, um, us what your concerns are, what your questions are. There is in litigation some confidentiality that is very difficult to discuss things back and forth. And this, of course, just landed on the, on the moorings. I think for tonight, one of the most important things is to go to the actual, what Situate's actually said in their, uh, website, that your moorings are safe. They're not going to take them. They're going to honor that. Your position on the waitlist will be honored. Now, there are lots of other issues and what, it's important that anybody here who has some insights that you think would be helpful, that are real concerns for you. This is an opportunity and we want to hear, you know, comments. Comments like, I didn't get this. My mooring is, isn't on there. And other things like that will be very helpful. So I encourage people at the rest of, we'll be in here late, but that's okay. Um, if you have suggestions and concerns that we may not be aware of, please let us know.
So one possibility that I wanted to, uh, discuss with my fellow Select Board members, um, including Mr. Grady and Mr. Plex on Zoom is, um, one option that we have, and this is why we put a vote on here, given that we are getting feedback and concern about the fee on the Cohasset side. We do want you to file your paperwork, but we could vote to delay the fee if that makes things easier as we figure out exactly what resolution or litigation may look like. If that's feedback you want to provide to us, we If that's feedback you want to provide to us, we could vote tonight to delay, let's say, until February 16th so we can see, maybe at that point, let's say hypothetically, we reach a resolution with Situate and we retain all the moorings and we ask you to pay your fee at that point. If that is something that, let me just see by show of hands, is that something that would be helpful to folks that are concerned about the fee issue? Okay. Mr. Grady, Mr. Plex, I know you can't see it, so I'm on the record to reflect that there was a show of hands that our audience members are asking us to consider delaying the fee. And I would suggest maybe until February 16th. Is there a select board member that would like to make a motion to that effect?
They're moved.
Second.
All right, I'm going to do roll call vote because we have Mr. Grady and Mr. Plex online. Mr. Grady? You want to vote first? Okay, thank you. Mr. Plex? Mr. Plex maybe had to drop off. Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, Creighton, aye.
Ms. Mar?
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jeanne Healy, dipple, aye. Okay, so we delayed the fee until February 16th to enable our folks a little bit of breathing room. But we ask you to file the paperwork because we want to maintain your.
Jane, we want to clarify that the fee that would be paid to Cohasset, we have no control over what Situate says.
Yes, right now, we cannot waive the Situate fee.
So which fee are you referring to?
The Cohasset fee.
The excise?
The Cohasset.
Two fees.
We can't, we can't control the excise.
The mooring fee, we can't control the excise fee.
Excise taxes, the excise taxes bill by the 10.
The mooring fee is later on in the paper.
So the excise taxes build through the state, through the towns. So that's an entire, so that's done entirely differently. So we can't control that, okay? That's why we are votes registered. So this is just for the mooring fee. So again, if that's not an issue, then it's been delayed now anyway. So we have to, so don't prepare your fee. But the excise taxes handle entirely differently. That's done through a state registration list that comes to the Sessions office. So it's a lot more complicated process and the board can't really do anything about that. That said, I would expect that by the time that comes through, there'll be some other clarifications.
Delay the fee that's due later than what you delayed it to.
Okay.
Yeah, we should have a resolve before, when I say resolve, I mean either resolve through a settlement with Situate or some other action.
But I think we need to really clarify that if you're supposed, if Situate says to pay a fee to keep your mooring, pay it, because that's Situate, not Cohasset.
So again, we cannot dictate what you do with Situate or provide you legal advice on that front. Some of you may want to pay, some of you may not. I do leave it up to you on that point. We cannot tell you not to pay the Situate fee.
Are you suggesting you pay two fees?
No, no, no. Excise tax is different than the mooring fee.
No, but I'm talking about the mooring fee. You pay Situate and Cohasset.
What we're suggesting is we can delay the mooring fee. For those of you who are going to pay it in advance, the board is indicating that we're open to delaying the mooring fee to determine whether we can reach a path forward on this issue with legal clarity, whether it's a agreement with Situate or a lawsuit at that point. By the time that the Cohasset fee is due, so to speak, in April, then we should know by now. But some people like to pay their fees early, you know, ahead of time. And so what we're saying is that we're going to exercise some discretion on our end for those of you who are concerned about needing to pay two fees, i.e. one to Situate and one to Cohasset. So we're talking about the Cohasset fee, the Cohasset mooring fee.
I've got two questions from two different people.
Okay.
First one is from David Farag.
Okay.
David, you've been promoted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. David Farag, 39 Beechwood Street. For the select board and everyone there and everyone watching at home, I think without bringing up all of the oyster farm issues, but when you look to the conduct of the Situate selectmen and their permitting boards, when all of this first started, they originally tried to permit the oyster farm on, through property that was not even owned by the applicant. And that was what first happened. And then when you look at going forward with what has happened tonight, without giving much notice to the town of Cohasset, its select board, and then just to send these out to the citizens regarding their moorings with a map that is most certainly not correct with the lines of the different towns, they have seemed to have a conduct that is to shoot first and ask questions later, and then everyone else has to clean up the mess once they do it. So I realize we have to be diplomatic and you're dealing with them with negotiations. There's a lot of delicate things that have to be done. But I think for the people there sitting there, listening and the people at home, when you look at the conduct of their town manager, their town council and their select board, at this point, I would say it's nothing less than shameful for what they've done and what they've done to the citizens of Cohasset to do this without notice and to just send this along and then just sit back and laugh. This is not how a town should, this is not how a town should be, conduct its business. And I think Cohasset better step up to the plate and get in the game because they're certainly, they're certainly, they're certainly doing what they're doing at every turn and sitting back and letting us deal with it. So I realize you all have to be diplomatic, you have to deal with them in negotiations. But as I said before, you can look at the conduct that they've done. And at being on a permitting board for over 12 years, one of the first things you do is to make sure that the applicant actually owns the property or has the power to do what they can do on that property. And that was not done with the original oyster farm. So I just leave the comments there and hopefully you can come to a diplomatic solution for the citizens of Cohasset. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farag.
Yeah, the second question from Mike. Then why are we allowing Situate to now manage the moorings and waitlist? I don't know who that was directed to, so I don't know if he wants to.
Again, I don't want people to take the misimpression that we're allowing Situate to do anything. We are at a point where we are discussing a potential resolution, but we're keeping all options open, including litigation.
Jack Murphy, 171 Beechwood Street. I am and do own a mooring that is in this area after being on the list for 28 years.
Congratulations.
But my concern personally is their dock is 8.1 miles away from by water to this location, riding the jetty. That response time is at least 30 minutes by the time they get out of their building. And have they allocated any, or at least mentioned allocating any other resources, both manpower and boats out of their own harbor into ours in order to keep our moorings safe and our boats that are not always attended to safe as well?
So certainly there has not been any public discussion. And, you know, those of you who listened to the Cohasset harbor master discussion last night can probably have your own opinions. But the mooring notice, to my knowledge, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, has not been accompanied by any plan that I'm aware of with respect to the Situate harbor master and resources and access and patrolling and safety that I'm aware of.
Eric Cruz, 6 Joy Place. Thank you for taking the time tonight to do this. Two questions. One, for clarification, are they asking that we take out all the stones and mooring tackle and everything else prior to January 1st? That's question one. Question two, you might not be able to answer. Since you made a point to say that they're doing this in response to the oyster litigation, did they also then say if the oyster litigation was dropped, if they would drop this?
So on the first point, again, they have told us, and I believe they publicly said, that the moorings will remain as is. Certainly, that would be something that if you had concerns, you should certainly contact Situate directly and get in writing directly from them. But that is again what they have told us and what they have publicly represented last night, including through their harbor master. So that's the information that we have. On the second point, in terms of the, you know, the back and forth, unfortunately, at this point, the potential settlement negotiations are confidential in accordance with litigation requirements. You know, they, Situate made clear that the actions they're taking right now with respect to the moorings are in a direct response to the oyster farm litigation, including the most recent one by FOA that was served in this month.
Susan Bryant of 251 Forest Avenue, speaking specifically as a resident and not of anything else that I represent or representing anybody else. I want to congratulate you for working together with Situate. That's how you opened the meeting. You said that you were having conversations and working with them. If we think about all the things that we have to work with Situate on, there are a lot and they make a big difference. So we have our side of the harbor and their side of the harbor, but we have one channel that goes in there and we got to make that work. If that channel doesn't work, we are all trapped in our own harbor. That's no good. We have climate resiliency. When you have climate resiliency issues, you have to do it with other towns. And all those funders, whether they're state funders or federal funders, are looking for regional cooperation. They're looking for partners and partnerships. So I would like to congratulate the select board on taking the effort to meet with Situate. And hopefully, we can get past the form of litigation, which is costly to us. The litigation people, it's going to cost us a lot more than the mooring fees. And so I hope that we can go forward and keep our cooperation with our neighbors because some of us have businesses that have clients in both Situate and Cohasset. We'd like to keep that peace. We have mutual aid from the fire department. If there's a fire in one place, the other towns come and take over and help out. And we have pollution issues that are from both, we have coasts on both sides of the Gulf River, Bailey's Creek and Briggs Harbor. If we don't have sewerage agreements and landscaping agreements, the pollution is going to come into our Cohasset harbor estuary and our fishermen are going to have it running right through their lobster cars. So we need collaboration and cooperation with Situate. None of the issues that are facing us in the 21st century are stuck on lines between towns other than who we pay our things to. But besides that, we can make agreements. We've gotten along really well for a long, long, long time. We've had great harbor masters in Cohasset. I love my harbor master and I feel grateful to have a good relationship with her and I can get safety and advice from her, from the different things that I do on the harbor. So in short, I think we need to be very careful about antagonizing our neighbors in other towns when we're in a time of climate change where we really need collaboration. So I would, and I also am really concerned about the Department of Marine Fisheries suing them when they are the ones that can help us make everything safer and less polluted. That's not a good idea either. So let's go for collaboration, let's keep our neighborliness and let's have a real community that we're all proud to live in.
Chuck, Black Rock Road again. So you were just looking for direction. So I know opinions are like blah, 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 everyone's got one. So the direction that I would put out is that if you guys are negotiating and the oyster farm is staying, I don't know how it's going to grow, but personally, for me and my family and many of the other young families that enjoy the sandbar, I think that sandbar section there would be paramount in any negotiation to ensure that it isn't dredged and disappeared. Or I know they can't put any oyster farms in the shallow part because, you know, all the birds and everything will eat them. But from a recreational standpoint, I, you know, in your negotiations, I'd really love it if you guys could keep that in mind because quite frankly, that's one of the reasons I live in this town, so.
Good evening. Dan McCormick, 140 Dawn Street. I also stay at 19 Grove Street in Situate, so I'm on both sides of the town line here. I want to thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight about this issue. I wish we had a little bit of presentation about what was happening and what Situate is proposing. I hope in the future that we can have that as part of this discussion so we all have better information about what Situate's doing, where the line is and where Cohasset is. Transparency, as we all know, in public is very important and we hope that that transparency is going to continue. You know, we all understand what's going to happen between the towns and how this is going to continue. I also want to thank Lori and her crew for all the hard work that they've done for years in this harbor. They have a very small crew with a very busy harbor. We have a fantastic harbor. It's 10 times better than Situate. I want to be here, we have a better beach, we have better facilities. And again, I thank her and her crew for everything that they do. And again, I look forward to continuing meetings with all the people in this room to all voice our opinions on how to make this work for both of our towns. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, well, thanks to everyone. Yes, Mr. Chitty.
Just one last, go around, I may not need the mic.
You will for the people on Zoom.
I know we can't, I can ask presidents and you cannot answer them because the discussions haven't gone very far. I understand that. But there are two or three things that really do worry me. This January 1st notice that you either, if you have any tackle or a mooring tackle or stones or anything, you move them out of the harbor if you haven't filled your application form. And there are people in this room who have moorings that have not been notified. And this, you know, very cutely came out a couple of days before Christmas. I'm sure there are mooring holders who have gone on vacation and even if it's in their mailbox, they don't know it. I think the first order of business is to forget all this stuff about, you know, we're going to delay a fee till March or some other time. Halt this process for now and so that you can negotiate openly and without a sword over your head. But I think this January 1st thing, if somebody misses it and is forced to move their mooring and it gets litigated and five years later they found out it was a mistake and they really should have had the mooring, blah, blah, blah. Okay, that's one thing. A second thing that worries me is that the language they use. Now, this is part of your negotiation, not, you can't play the magic wand, but what the language in the piece I got in the mail says, owners of any mooring, mooring tackle or idle equipment, whatever the hell that means, in the territorial jurisdiction of Situate must apply for annual permit for the placement on a temporary basis. So it says I have to apply annually. Now, that may be something as simple as writing a check to Situate. But we don't apply annually for renewal here. We get billed, it's a simple process. We pay the fee and we're good to go. And it has to be at our volition that we are removed from the mooring list. Either we don't have a boat or we don't wish to operate in Cohasset waters. But I worry about the things like temporary basis of moorings, floats or rafts, mooring, mooring tackle or idle equipment. That sounds to me like it's very, very temporary, very transitory, and I worry about that. So as you go forth, I don't think it's good enough even to say that the present mooring holders and the present waitlist will remain intact. Because what if, well, I guess George said he's got a son or grandson coming along. What if somebody wants to add a child or moves into town and go on the waitlist? I mean, is the only thing grandfathered the waitlist that we have for the next two weeks? Or is, will this be part of a permanent agreement? I'm sure it will be, but I'm just recommending it. And the third thing that worries me a lot, it has to do with leverage. Yes, Cohasset has paid for its share of dredging 100% as opposed to Situate. and the maintenance and upkeeping of the waterway and the harbor master and her equipment, et cetera. But let's face it, what if five or 10 years from now, the harbor needs to be redredged, or the channel needs to be redredged? We say, Situate, gee, you have about two thirds or three quarters of the harbor, according to your map, if that map is accurate. So you get two thirds to three quarters of the cost. And we know what dredging costs. It's a six figure and then some, right? Even our share. But what if Situate says, I don't wanna, you know, that's excessive. I mean, are we gonna be stuck with a disproportionate cost for the physical property we maintain? Are we going to be stuck with the cost? I mean, I agree that it's not gonna be a public safety issue if it takes you 30 minutes to go from Situate Harbor. It's ridiculous. I mean, you know. That is the safety. And I worry that the costs are gonna still continue to burden Cohasset. Only, we will not be getting, it isn't the mooring fees that are a big deal, but there's gonna be competing interests here. And I worry about the financial interest and the financial capability of the town to handle this if we're gonna get outvoted, or even if an agreement can be struck, so it's a 50-50 decision. That's difficult to make difficult decisions if it's one against one, so. I worry about leverage, the size of the towns, the costs and things, and Situate could well say, I know, my citizens rarely use Cohasset Harbor. I'm not gonna pay for the next dredging. We can't force them. All we can do is wring our hands. And I, I, all I see here is something that says you've got seven or eight days to take action, and you've gotta move mooring tackle out. Go ahead.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
It might be a good thing to ask the town of Situate, which holds, which document holds their website that says February 1st? Letters that some received that says January 1st? I think it's a fair question to ask Situate.
So, hold on, please.
Which one takes precedent?
We can't have cross-talk, including for the record and for people on Zoom. So the question is, which notice takes precedent? The one that was sent to people that Mr. Chidik is holding in his hand, or the one that is now updated on their website that I believe was subsequent to that notice that has a February 1 deadline and not a January 1 deadline? That is something that we can ask them, you know, candidly, I wasn't even aware that they just updated their website. I think today, or maybe yesterday, with a different deadline. So we can, we can try to figure that out and then provide clarity on that point. But really, Situate, I don't, look, this isn't our idea. Like, Situate is doing this. Situate should be answering these questions on behalf of Situate with their official answer for you all. The question should be put to Situate, what's the date that controls? Is it January 1st or February 1st? Because they, they did this, and they need to take responsibility for what their exact date is. We can assist, but I would encourage you all to directly reach out and get that response in writing as well. So, Mr. Chidik, you brought up a bunch of great points. Those are points that we can, we can take under consideration. I was writing them down, including your last point with respect to payment for dredging. I mean, we are all painfully aware of how increasingly expensive, you know, dredging is getting, and I mean, these are all issues that the select board is, you know, trying to grapple with as we speak. So that's where we are right now at this point. Take one last comment. It's 8:30.
I totally agree with all the comments that we ought to settle this peacefully with Situate. I think you underestimate the value of Cohasset Harbor being Cohasset Harbor. You should also figure out somehow what the total increased value of land in the whole town is having a harbor. If we don't have a harbor, I think there may be a lot more requests for assessment reductions, one. Two, I would like to know how much Cohasset has paid for the dredging in the past. And I think those figures are available on the Army Corps of Engineers. And we should find that, and that will also show us where the dredging took place. I'm also a trustee of Cohasset Conservation Trust, and we own to low watermark in the harbor. That sort of confuses the whole issue, and the negotiator should be aware of that at the same time. Again, I thank you for your time, and keep on top of this.
All right, thank you. Excellent points, including in my mind that Cohasset has paid for dredging over the years. In terms of the exact amount, I don't know. That's certainly something that we can figure out if we need to. We know that we've paid a lot of money over the years. So at this point, our next select board meeting is January 9th. We may, we will likely try to meet potentially before then, but that is our current next meeting. To the extent that we have further information, including, for example, again, I hesitate for the town of Cohasset to speak for the town of Situate. I think the town of Situate should speak directly for Situate, including whether it's January 1st or February 1st, for example, that controls. I think you want that information directly from them, including, you know, what their most recent position is to the extent they change it again. So I would encourage you to get that information directly from Situate, but you can always contact us. Email is probably easiest as we, you know, grapple with the holidays and people sort of being in and out. Yes, sir. Do you have anything new to add?
To your point, could we please ask for the town manager to be at the next hearing we have? The Situate Town Manager, could we request that through them, so that you have their opinion on why and how this is happening?
I mean, we can request whatever we want, but it doesn't mean that it's gonna happen. I think, I think that, we'll see, we'll see. I understand why you're asking for it, and I get that. I think.
They should be represented here for having discussions about Situate. They should be here in attendance to discuss what their view is on how this is gonna continue.
Gene.
Yes, Chris.
I would just suggest that we, we see how the negotiation goes a little bit. We're not at the point yet, I don't think, where we really know where we're gonna end up in terms of who has jurisdiction over what and where. So before we create some kind of implicit suggestion that this is done, we have to get through the negotiation a little bit and get some of this in writing, so we're all protected under something that is legally binding.
Yeah, and Chris, the suggestion was to have the Situate Town Manager attend our meeting to answer outstanding questions to the extent that they existed. So that's certainly something that we can consider. So at this point, we are gonna keep moving forward with the path that I just described. We appreciate all of your comments. Notwithstanding our calm demeanor, we are very upset in part because we're trying to figure this out, just like you, and take appropriate steps to protect all of our residents and those who enjoy the moorings within Cohasset Cove and safeguard the harbor. And that remains our primary core goal.
Excuse me, just to your last point, that we should be asking Situate for the current information. You are our elected representatives. We're counting on you to deal with this, and we need you to get the information to us. We shouldn't be having 8,000 people calling Situate, 8,000 different answers. And a final question. Are they aware, and are you all aware of the last time they did this, like 19, early 70s, when they were going to tax the boats on their side of the harbor, to be clear what that was? And after realizing that they could not survive harbor master, night watchman, mooring maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, dredging, everything that's been talked about, they withdrew. Is that something that's on?
Yes, we're aware. I believe that was in the 1980s. There was back and forth, including an agreement that Cohasset and Situate reached as to the moorings that was then supplanted by state law that occurred in the late 1980s. And I take your point about we are your elected officials, and we're trying to get information from Situate. At the same time, when we talk as a select board, we have to do it in a public session with a quorum, and time is tight. And so Situate has the most up-to-date information, including the information they continue to change on their website without telling us. And so again, I would encourage you to email the harbor master, the Situate harbor minister directly, particularly if there is emerging information. You can always contact us, but we are a step removed, contacting Situate directly is important as well.
Perhaps Chris could, as our town manager.
Yes, I understand that, but, but at the same time, Chris, Chris can contact them, but they could change their opinion the next day, as we've seen with the January and February 1 notice. So again, for the protection of everyone who has a specific question relating to what Situate is doing, the Situate harbor master and the Situate town manager are probably the best two individuals to email directly. You can copy our town manager if you don't get a response, if that's something you would like to do, including so we can see what Situate's answer is. That would be helpful. We appreciate those of you who have told us what Situate is telling you. So in any event, that's where I would leave that. We will try to provide you with information as we have it, including Mr. Senior. We'll continue to reach out to Situate, but as you've seen, the information is changing more quickly maybe than we can stay on top of it. So that's why I just want to make sure we don't provide you with the wrong information. That is my concern. If Situate, you know, changes its mind again. So I want to make sure you have the most updated information. So thank you.
I'd just like to say, as you people go forward, instinctively, I don't think Situate publicly has any interest in supervising Cohasset Harbor. Bottom line. I think they've got mad about this oyster thing. I thought the oyster thing would die a natural death. You've never been out there in North Asia. I cannot foresee oysters surviving, so I'm just thinking, I don't think they have any interest in mining Cohasset Harbor. If you present all the overhead and whatever, that's my instincts. Just going.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, I've said the last comment about five times.
Mark down 21 Beach. What is the board's position on the appeal of the Oyster Farm?
What is the board's position on the appeal of the Oyster Farm?
Is your, is your position on that connected to the motion?
Right now, we are currently not appealing the navigation by law opinion by the Attorney General. We do have a lawsuit that is pending. The town of Cohasset, authorized by the select board, has a lawsuit that is pending with respect to a number of allegations under state law with respect to the oyster farms, including the safety and the sewer issues, et cetera. And that's been filed against the town of Cohasset, excuse me, town of Situate, the Division of Marine Fisheries, and the three oyster farmers. And so that was filed back in early, late August. And so there are two lawsuits going on, the separate one by FOB, and then the town of Cohasset lawsuit. I don't know if that provides any clarity, but that's where we are right now. Okay, so. Mr. McGoldrick, you're killing me. Yes, as it relates to the sewer, the town of Cohasset has brought forth a lawsuit against the town of Situate, among the others that I just mentioned, on the basis that by way of background, under federal law, the FDA has put forth the NSSP, which are essentially National Shellfish Guidelines, which the state has adopted vis a vis its state laws, namely DMF has adopted that. And as a part of those guidelines, there are requirements. And a part of those requirements is that the wastewater treatment operator, to the extent that you're putting an oyster farm right outside of the discharge line for the sewer, has to be engaged in that oyster farm process with respect to what's called a camp conditional area management plan with respect to the discharge coming out of the sewer plant, which sometimes can be more depending on a storm event, for example. It's a food safety issue. Cohasset is the wastewater treatment manager that has discharge that is literally going out to the edge of where Situate permanently oyster farms. And so, and we don't have the requisite requirements in place. I'm not gonna get into it. We have pending litigation. You can read the entire complaint that we filed. It's on the website. It's on the Cohasset Select Board webpage. It's, there's, there's that issue among other claims that we've also brought based on safety, et cetera. So that is, that is the quote sewer issue, if that helps clarify things. So probably just opens up more. But given where we are right now, it's 8:45. We're happy to take further comments individually, I'm sure, but we will continue to engage on this issue and provide updates as we have them. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I see, Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis, Atlantic Avenue, also known in Situate as the Devil Incarnate. All of you know that disputes and conversations and discussions between what is now Cohasset and what is now Situate have been going on since pre-colonial days. The line itself that separates what was the Massachusetts Bay Colony and the Plymouth Bay Colony has been in dispute over those 400 or 500 years. The other issue that we have is that Cohasset, as you've heard, has been enjoying Cohasset Harbor for all those hundreds of years. When I was called five years ago, when I was chair of the Harbor Committee, by the time the chair of the Situate Select Board, our Situate Shellfish Advisory Committee, and the one person who is the oyster farmer who is promoting this, called me and said, we want to put a small agriculture farm in Briggs Harbor. Just out of curiosity, how many people here know where Briggs Harbor is? Okay, so about half of us know where Briggs Harbor is. I said, and these were my words, I support agriculture. I support oyster farming. If you can do that without violating private property laws or impeding navigation, I am totally supportive of it. Within two weeks, Situate published their map showing oyster farms and 38 acres of Cohasset Harbor. So, and I called them on that, and they said, well, that's what we can do. So they basically lied to me. They lied to all of you. You've heard tonight many objections and many concerns from the citizens of Cohasset. I think the only thing we can do as a town is file for a temporary injunction so that we can sort these things out. And I would employ. And I would implore the town of Cohasset through its select board to file for a temporary injunction until we can sort this out. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your feedback, Mr. Davis. All right, at this point. Silence. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Oh, I thought, I thought you were celebrating adjournment.
Other's on 37th and Church Street. I have an opinion about, just about everything that was brought up tonight. I agree with Tim. Situate went about doing this in a shady manner, including the town line. There is, well, was in the past, a letter that was brought out every time Situate attempted to do a takeover. I believe, I remember flourish times it happened. What happened to that letter? Has regulations changed to make it no longer usable? Did it disappear? I have a lot of things to say, but I mean, we'll leave that alone now.
I mean, if anyone has a copy of the letter, that'd be great to see. If someone wants to send it. I am not exactly sure what letter you're alluding to. Maybe, I know that in the 80s, there was back and forth on this and like I said, we did come to an agreement, the town did, and then it was supplanted by state law at that point. But again, again, we welcome, if people have, you know, historic information or records, they want to send us, completely open to seeing what you have. You know, we're, we're working quickly on a fast timeline, so welcome that information if you have it. Thank you for having. When a member of the audience moves to adjourn, I think we're.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:50 PM.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Thank you, Chris, thank you.